Sabbath, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role?
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Lasky.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Keck.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Interim community development director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Any citizen with correspondence to be distributed to council should provide items to the city clerk prior to the start of the meeting or after the meeting has adjourned, limited to five minutes. Anybody? Do you have a comment on the agenda?
Uh, yes, um, I didn't quite hear you.
On the agenda, do you have a comment on the agenda?
On the public hearings?
Yes.
Of the site of the?
Yes.
Bandstand?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry.
It's okay, I'm losing my voice, so I'm not as loud as I usually am.
Hi, my name is Lee Hansen Schleifly. Good evening. I want to thank you for the opportunity to allow me to come here because...
Can you speak into the mic so we can hear you?
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity of me coming here today because the site is in the city, I live in the city, and I pay city taxes. I'd like to read you this article I wrote, "Keep the View of Lake Michigan and Landscape Open for All to Enjoy." This letter is to Mrs. Lasky and other members of the Manistee City Council. If someone were to ask you, what does Manistee make you think of, I suspect the answer would be Lake Michigan, pristine beaches, colorful sunsets, and national forests. Recently, many of we locals heard and read there is conversation of a proposal to construct a bandstand covered with electricity. A few sites were mentioned. First Street Beach was one suggestion. Nothing would make Manistee residents and our tourists happier than to keep the view of Lake Michigan open for all to see and enjoy for decades to come. Odds are today, someone is photographing the lighthouse, piers, freighters, and sunsets. Today, we have a very successful musical shoreline circuit located just south of the Hampton Inn at First Street Beach. Upon some social interaction, local residents conveyed their ideas on this topic with a couple of suggestions. The Veterans Memorial Park has a bandstand with a gazebo. Its backdrop is the Manistee River Channel. Musical performances occur occasionally there during the summer months only. Today, it appears to need some maintenance. Why not enlarge it, cover it, and add electricity? It's a great location, there is both parking and the means to walk to the venue. Shoppers on River Street and restaurateurs could listen and join the musical crowd. Manistee Catholic Central Stadium was mentioned, too. Ample parking surrounded by immense seating. The seniors' centers land west of their building might be considered. This location is where the Stations of the Cross existed at one time. Noise pollution, traffic, litter, and human erosion are just a few talking points when analyzing the most desirable site. Let's make it a win-win for all. Today, I was thinking. Another venue came to mind. What about the Ramsdale Theater? I've read they are having some financial burdens today. We can help save and finance our wonderful historical venue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I had one more thing to say before I shall...
Good evening, my name is Cynthia Leach, and I have brought with me, I think someone everybody knows, and it's Mona. Has withstood the ages, and I believe she would be a good mascot for our beach. But of course, you could, you could like make her into something other than natural and beautiful. We could put falls out of ashes on her, just like messing up the beach, adding things we don't need down there, like a, you know what I mean, amphitheater? Let's see, what else should we put on her? Anyway, so you get the point that things that are beautiful and have withstood time through the ages, took over 14,000 years to, ago it was, the beach was created, and I think it's our job to protect it. So, that being said, I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Is this the moment where people can stand up and give their little ideas or proposals?
If it's about an agenda-related item, yes. If it's not on the agenda, it's after the meeting.
Um, I'm sorry, I really need a hearing aid.
If it's on an agenda-related item, you can do that now. If it's something else, then it's when the meeting is finished, when I do public comment.
Well, it's got to do with the street, renaming of the streets.
Okay, that's at the end of the meeting. That's at the end of the meeting.
Oh, after, after, oh, I...
At the end. Nope, you're fine. Nope, you're fine. I'll call you at the end. Okay. Anybody else?
No.
Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered by city manager to be retained matters prior to approval. Any member of council may have an item removed if taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, balance sheet, consideration of resolution authorizing Consumers Energy Company to make changes in lighting service in the city of Manistee, consideration of tabling the conditional rezone from R1 to Z2 for 555 First Street Armor Youth Project, consideration of the Outsider Car Club meetup. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Heather, would you please take role?
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of renewing those legal services contract with Bloom Sluggett PC on October 15th, 2024, the city of Manistee entered into a contract with Bloom Sluggett PC to provide municipal legal services. The agreement requires Bloom Sluggett to permit, submit a renewal request and an annual summary of work performed to the city by September 30th, 2025. If renewed, the contract will automatically continue on an annual basis unless terminated in accordance with its terms. The city manager recommends the approval of the contract renewal. At this time, council could take action to renew the legal services contract with Bloom Sluggett PC. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
I just have a couple questions, not being on council when this was addressed previously. Is there an increase in the rates from last year?
So, we had an original contract, there would be a freeze for the first two years, so there's not going to be one this, this coming year.
Okay. Do we pay a retainer?
We do not.
Okay. Thank you.
I had one question. What are the increments that you, is it 30 minutes, 15 minutes, 10, what are the?
Six minutes, so tenth of an hour.
Fair, thank you.
All good?
Yes.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a one-year agreement with Housing North. The city's three-year contract with Housing North recently expired in the current fiscal year budget. The city allocated $10,000 for this activity. However, ongoing housing-related grant projects require Housing North to take a more active role while staffing gaps are addressed in the coming months, and an amount of $16,000 is proposed for the special housing-related grant work, and additional funds are available in the community development budget due to an unfulfilled staff position. At this time, council could take action to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the Housing North agreement and the necessary budget amendment transferring $6,000 from the community development to the Economic Development Department. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I guess, what's, what's the, so that we have no contract at all right now, correct?
Yeah, the contract recently expired. So, and it was $20,000 a year for three years. Yeah, I would just kind of add when we did the budget, obviously Trace, Teresa was on board, so originally, just kind of a chill grant update, originally Tracy, Teresa worked on the grant, and then we had, Jerry was also involved, and now, at this point, it's me, Tracy, and Jerry's doing a lot of work kind of with the grant. We're kind of at that point where we did a bid in August, received quite a few of the bids for all the different work at the houses, so there's, if you can imagine, we have different contractors. Each house has, you know, perhaps electrical, plumbing, roof, siding. Jerry's been going around. We have probably 75% of the bids we need. We're kind of working through, making sure all the paperwork's done. We have to have a contract with each contractor, so we're going to be, we want to have some continuity. Tracy has some experience with this. We have to meet with the homeowners with the packets for each of the contracts, so it's kind of, it's following our purchasing requirements and all the requirements of the MISTHA grant. So, I'm looking to get all of this committed by the end of the year. A lot of communities are behind, I think we're supposed to have it all done by the end of the year, but we, if we have it all committed, we can apply for an extension to have all the work done, and now we're meeting weekly with Jerry and Tracy, and we're kind of working through this, but it's, yeah, we just kind of have a lot of meetings and a lot of paperwork to kind of get in order, but it's coming together. But I'm hoping council will approve this and kind of keep the continuity with Tracy being involved. But the chill grants are really kind of the main thing we're working on. There's other things that Tracy's working on, but definitely need assistance with that.
Do other entities contribute to this, or is the only other city entities?
Originally, with that three-year contract that we had, there were other commitments by other entities. I don't know exactly where all of those other commitments are, but that's why we're proposing the one-year contract to kind of see through a couple of things we started.
Are those entities still with this contract as well?
No, this is our own contract, but, yeah. The other ones did their own contracts with housing, but Yaro from Housing North kind of, before Tracy was brought on, kind of collectively saw it was something that enough entities were interested in to bring on a dedicated staff person. Just talking about the Yaro, I think regardless, I think there's work in that organization for Tracy, but I would like to see us kind of see through a couple of these projects.
So, what's the difference between the, I'm just wondering why there's a difference between the $10,000 and $16,000, when we always knew it was $10,000 when we did the budget, and Housing North was always working on the chill grant, so...
Yeah, so they were always, it was always $20,000 a year.
Right.
We kind of had a very, you know, we had a tight budget this year, so that was one thing that did get cut down to 10. Since that time, you know, Teresa left, and then I kind of talked about making sure that we have someone kind of fill that role of kind of meeting with the homeowners and the contractors, and just kind of making sure some of that chill grant-related things that Teresa would have been doing would fall onto more Tracy at this point, but, so, I guess a couple of things changed between the time of the budget. We had, it was $20,000 a year always with Housing North. It did get cut to 10 since that time Teresa left, and I think there was kind of an interest in, we did kind of talk through with Yaro, I said we have $10,000 available, she said that they'd be willing to do a year contract for 16, and so that's, that's how it got to where it is right now.
Yeah, I'm okay with the 10, I'm not okay with the 16.
So, I believe this is only necessary because we lost a full-time position.
I would say that's kind of added to the interest, my interest in making sure there's continuity, that's definitely increased my interest in it.
And if we don't complete what we need in the chill grant, the community's going to lose that grant, correct?
Correct.
That's serious.
But they're 75% already have the contractor bids on them?
So, we have to complete the Tier Two environmental, that's been, that's underway now. Once that's done, then we can, we have certain ones, we have the required amount of bids for, so we can move forward with all the contracts. So, we have sufficient, and Jerry, feel free to, but we have, so there's certain steps you have to take before you can finalize everything, but we're getting every, we're basically at the point now where we feel we have enough information to get probably about 75% going right after this Tier Two environmental is done.
So, out of the 13 properties, each property has inspection checks?
Let me stop, you're right there. What 13 properties are we talking about? You referred to that, too. What are these?
Chill, chill grant, I'm sorry. So, it's a, it's a housing, it's a rehab grant program, so we rewarded $500,000 and up to $40,000 per property. We've been kind of working through it, you have to address critical needs at these properties, so this is kind of low, income-eligible properties that people applied to, so it's really a rehab program for the city that we've received MISTHA money for.
Okay. Sorry about that, go ahead.
At the initiation of this, Teresa and Tracy identified the 13 properties, awarded those properties the grant, they sent me in as the inspector, and as the inspector, I inspected for the critical needs, life safety issues per HUD guidelines. With that, each property is a little bit different. Some have eight to 10 critical needs, some have three. That being said, we set them up in a priority list. With that list, everyone is a little bit different. We have houses that need electrical, we have houses that need plumbing, we have houses that need roofing, we have some that need windows, we have some that need complete bathroom remodels. That is an extensive project management undertaking, which typically, when you're inspecting the project, you don't write the bid specs and manage the projects. With Teresa leaving, I'm doing a little bit of everything, and Tracy's picked up the slack and filed all the documents that involved in each one of these aspects of the project, which is a stack of documents like this that the state keeps telling us to, you need this document, you need this waiver, you need this, it's an enormous amount of work, with great benefit, I won't, I won't...
So, they're guiding us. Housing North is guiding us, is that correct? Is there anything tangible that we get out of our $16,000 from Housing North?
Yeah, so there's a list of items at the back, but it is basically seeing that...
I didn't read the list, but everything is support, 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 so are we not capable of doing that on our own? This is something that we need Housing North for?
So, we have, we've lost, so we, we are going to be hiring a planner at some point, but I do think, yeah, we do need some assistance, and it's, it's actually valuable, too, to have someone other than Jerry be involved with kind of meeting with the, going over the contracts with them, so we need an individual. Could someone else be brought up to speed? Yes, but we're kind of at a critical time when we just need to see this through the next two months, and it's, it's just kind of a, that contract with Housing North ended, so like I said, I wanted to have continuity, just see this through, so it's, could it be done without Housing North? Yes. Would it be more challenging? Yes. And it is kind of, it's just, it's just something that would be easier if we had their assistance.
So, we just need them to see it through for the next two, three months? They can't do that for $10,000?
So, there's also the housing readiness grant, that one, there's some other things that they're, that she's working on as well, but this is the most critical.
And if we take that money from a different fund, what happens when we need that money to pay somebody to help us?
So, we're already about, we're about fourth of the way through the fiscal year, and I proposed using some of the uns, some of the money freed up from the staffing, and so we have, we have money available because of the unfilled staff position that can cover this.
Did you talk to Housing North, or they, I mean, would, would she still work on it for the, or they would allow her to work on it, however that works? She's contracted for the $10,000, I mean, we do provide the office in our building and access to probably whatever else, but...
I did, I did propose the $10,000, and that's where the, the $16,000 came back, they originally wanted 20, so this is, this is where we're at.
Well, for saving money from Teresa leaving, you have all that, what's left, whatever?
Right, approximately 17,000.
For somebody else to help Jerry out, how much are we proposing to pay them?
I can send you a breakdown, but we have the money to cover this. I can send you a detailed breakdown, but we have more, the 6,000 extra here, we have, we'll have, we have, we will have access to that with the community development budget.
Oh, is this a temporary employer or employee, or are we going to keep around here, keep her already?
So, I did send, I think, a council an update that the individual that we're looking to hire did pass the pre-employment, so we are looking to bring on someone full-time, but in a planner role, planning and zoning role, not, not a community director role.
And there's 13 of the houses, or 13 of the packets that need to be completed?
Correct.
In three months.
13, there's multiple packets for each 13 properties.
Right. The 13 properties.
It'd be very beneficial for the city for your stay on and help with this.
Seems to be some division, could we, there seems to be a little bit of division back and forth with the questions and stuff. Could we reduce it to, you know, reach a median?
You have to make a motion.
Like 12,000?
Are you making a motion?
I make a motion that we offer the 12,000 just for the next, I mean, they have it for all year, but the work will be over hopefully in a couple months, and, and it's not, it's going to Housing North. It's not like it's, oh, I'm going to go to Teresa, she, so, you know, she's, her pay should not be affected probably by that.
You state that motion.
I make, I make a motion that we do a one-year contract with Housing North for $12,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
I'm sorry, can I interrupt?
Yep, sorry.
Just procedural, I'm sorry. It should be a motion to amend the original motion, so if you could just restate it as a motion to amend?
I make a motion to amend the original motion, and that the contract with Housing North for one year be $12,000.
Still seconding that?
And I will still second that.
Lady who has questions?
Yeah, I guess, I'm not sure about the number 12,000. It's like, if they offered 20, and we said 10, shouldn't it be somewhere closer to the middle?
Well, our budget was 10, is that, that's where the 10 came from, was our...
That was...
Our budget. We budgeted the 10.
Yeah, that's the counter offer. They're countering, again, with 16, so where did the 12? To me, I would think a number like 14 would be between. I guess that's my question.
She picked 12?
Yeah.
Saving money?
Yeah, it was just cost savings.
It can come back for further discussion, but I think the motion is to offer 12, is that what we're saying?
The motion is...
That was the motion.
End this original one and do a one-year contract for $12,000 for one year for Housing North.
Hmm. I guess I, I know the chill grant awardees, it's income-based, you know, because they can't afford to make these improvements, I guess I'm not sure jeopardizing that, knowing that in this fund, there are the funds. I guess I'm a little worried. And even if it's two weeks back and forth for bill to get to with Housing North and so on, that's two weeks we're losing, and in addition, Mr. Blue has other obligations, so I guess I'm, I'm worried about, uh, no.
Oh, it hasn't passed yet. The motion hasn't passed, so...
Both of them come out, yeah?
I don't think it would be reduced.
Two weeks.
They were cut by the other, I mean, Housing North was phased out a little bit by some of the other entities that had been supporting them for probably a justifiable reason, so it's probably that also...
But that's to our benefit.
No, but that also could affect why they want more from us, and the city always seems to be the one that gives more.
But we're asking for more work, so isn't that fair? And with other entities not being involved, I would think Ms. Davis would have more time to spend on our obligations. So, I, I think it's a benefit, that's all, so, just had to say it.
Anybody else?
Yep, I get it, I have to interrupt one more time. I'm sorry to make this more confusing. It was originally a motion to transfer 6,000, so it should be a motion to amend the original motion to transfer 2,000.
Okay, thank you.
Go on, do it again.
Make the motion to amend the original, to transfer 2,000 to Housing North contract for one year.
Okay, so, and I will still second that. Any other questions? Heather, would you please take role?
So, we're going to vote on that amended motion first, and then...
Transfer the 2,000.
Yes. Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
No.
Okay, that motion has passed, and then we're going to vote on the original motion as amended. Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga. So, what, we're, we're voting on the original motion as amended now for the 12,000? So, the first one we...
No.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
So, both motions have passed.
Thank you. Consideration of approving contract for boulevard tree planting, the Department of Public Works and the Manistee Tree Commission jointly worked to submit a grant application to Consumers Energy to support boulevard tree planting. The grant application was successful with a $3,000 grant being awarded. The tree planting scope of work was publicly bid, two bids were received with Upland Meadows Landscaping submitting the low bid of 6,500. At this time, council could take action to approve a contract with Upland Meadows Landscaping an amount of 6,500 and authorize the public works depart, I'm sorry, Public Works Director to sign. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I do have just a couple of small questions, just for understanding purposes. I'm guessing that before my time, 8th Street was chosen for this. Is there a specific reason we're working on 8th Street and nowhere else, or is that yet to come?
So, the Tree Commission has, kind of on their own, as their own initiative, looked around for places where there isn't a lot of canopy coverage along the boulevards, and has chosen kind of that 8th Street corridor is a place to start.
Okay.
The other thing that's happening is the County Conservation District secured a very large grant and has inventoried all the trees within the city of Manistee in, in the parks and in the, the street boulevards, and part of that grant will, will plant quite a few trees, actually.
Okay.
So, there'll be more of this to come, but this is kind of initiative that the Tree Commission has selected.
Okay, I was just curious, because obviously that was before my time. And then, in the, the two quotes or the two bids that we see, one specifically spells out the labor cost, which is what puts it so far over the top. The one by, the one that we want to do at the Upland Meadows does not specifically say, but it does talk down below on the bid, that it's the, the water bag and so on, the mulch. Are we confident that it, that includes the labor involved in planting the sentries?
Yes, and...
Okay, because it was much more specific.
Yeah, the, the way that the, the bids were written, this was responsive to that, and it includes providing the trees and installing them and providing the watering bag.
Okay.
And they're a little bit higher than the past tree contracts that we did, but they're fairly close to being in line.
Okay.
The low bid is.
I just noticed such a huge difference, that I just wanted to make sure that Upland understood that it was labor-intensive, too. Okay, that's me, I only questions.
Do you have any on Cherry Street with the islands and all that?
They haven't come up with the recommendations from the, the work that the Conservation They haven't come up with the recommendations from the, the work that the Conservation District is completing. But I think it's focused on more of the north side in Maxwelltown, is what the grant was based on.
So it's a nice variety of trees that were selected?
Well.
Good native.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that on Eighth Street, there's some very major power lines, and so there's been a lot of trees that have been removed, a lot of trees that have had the, the centers of them cut out, kinda create that Y. So these trees that are being planted, we've got specific approval from Consumers Energy to plant below those high-power lines, because they don't grow to the height where they would interfere.
Which brings me to my next question.
Okay.
A lot of the trees are like deer fodder, and we know we have lots of deer around here. Are there gonna be any, anything added to prevent them becoming decimated by a friendly neighborhood deer population?
There's nothing in the contract that guarantees them against animal impacts.
I'm a little worried about that. And then the other question is, how are the people, the landowners, you know, in front of these, are they notified at all or anything?
Yeah, so the, last year, we did the, almost the exact same program, and the, the homeowners were not notified. So with the Tree Commission, we discussed this quite a bit, the Tree Commission has gone out to each of these homes now and kinda informed them of what the plan is, and this is when the grant was submitted. And then they've put together a, a kind of a neat little flyer that, that once the trees are planted, describes that there's watering bags provided, and how they can ensure the health of the tree by, you know, filling those for the first two years. And then we've also started a program where those bags can be turned back into BPW, and, and we can reuse those instead of purchasing them every year. And it's a little different with this program than with our annual tree planting program, 'cause the annual tree, you don't pay a lot, it's seventy-five dollars, but you get a four hundred, four hundred and fifty-dollar tree out of that. But you've got some ownership in that, and you've requested it, so, so that was a discussion with the Tree Commission, that we wanna engage those people so that they're invested in their forum and, and, you know, aid in their success.
Sounds good. Already good? Heather, would you please take a roll? Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Keck?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution of support for the Manistee Amphitheater Foundation, the Manistee Amphitheater Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization proposes to construct a permanent amphitheater at Douglas Park for Street Beach. Consistent with the city's adopted master, beach master plan, the Manistee Amphitheater Foundation requests approval of the resolution of support, raising the foundation to move forward with the fundraising applications and preliminary design effects. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution of support for the Manistee Amphitheater Foundation, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion so that we can have it open for discussion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So, yes.
Is some, can someone present on it? We don't know.
Oh, okay.
We don't know much.
Yep, we need, we need more.
Hello, Mark Sandstedt, 503 Seventh Street, we were here in January, I believe, when you had your study session. A lot's happened then, very positively, our organization has kinda gotten its legs as far as, you know, our legal status, 501(c)(3) status. We've received ten thousand dollar capital investment from West Shore Bank as startup money, and we're working on the next phase of this, which is really step one, and that's the resolution. Previously, when Salt City Rock and Blues attempted to do the amphitheater structure, the city was never brought on board with that. And that's really what this resolution does, is it brings the city on board, accepting that this is gonna be our asset, there isn't gonna be any cost to the city, 'cause we're gonna raise the money privately, and we're gonna raise the money privately to maintain it, and we have a plan for that. So it's really a win-win. We did have to get a little bit over our skis with the preliminary design, because we understand that the view corridor is absolutely precious, and it's precious to all of us that live in Manistee. As far as this site, this site's been talked about for many years, the beach master plan was an ongoing process, ample time for public input. Multiple other sites were considered, from other sites at Douglas Beach or Douglas Park, one of the softball fields, couple areas around the Lions Park, Manistee Catholic Stadium, St. Mary's, Manmade Lake, Red Shameric Park, everything came back to this area. So with that, we re-engaged with Mike Corby, the architect who provided the previous renderings. And I approached him to see if he'd be willing to work with us on a design that would be a little bit more scope and scale to our community, something that we could afford to build, that wouldn't take away from the beach but would add to the beach, while maintaining the open area that views. And frankly, the area that we're talking about is the only area at the beach that you can't see Lake Michigan, so if anything, we may even be exposing more of Lake Michigan in this. The dune won't be touched, the big cluster of willow trees is up, it's in our logo, we wanna preserve and highlight that, in fact, maybe with a plaza around it, could be an opportunity to preserve that willow tree, it's very cool. It's actually a bunch of about fifteen willow trees, it looks like one giant one. The good news for us is Mr. Corby said, yeah, Mark, I'd like to work with you on that in, in short order. And so we got together in short order with our board, and we met down there on a Sunday, and I sent him some drone photos. And I'd just like to share with you, because I think until you see it, you won't really appreciate the work that we've put into this, to try to make this fit into this area. And I think it will be something so unique and so special, that everybody in this community is gonna be very proud of it. And it won't be anything that we will ever have any regrets over building, that's our goal. So Bill, if you would bring up, right now, we're just calling it the dune, we don't like the connotation that amphitheater or stage brings, because we wanna really focus on the whole area. The area will remain very open, very much like it is now. Go ahead on the next, so obviously, that's the area, you know, that's the project location. And then if we go to the next one, that's stage-oriented, west-southwest, so one hundred percent of this sound will be going out over the lake, away from anybody. Nobody's gonna hear it unless you're in front of the stage. So from that, that is the dune, it's an earthen structure, it preserves the view. If you go to the next slide, couple slides, you drive by, go to the next one, Bill, you don't even know it's there, literally. We worked really hard to keep the sightline below the top of the dune, as you can see, the dune is untouched, the tree is there. It's very accessible, and I think it kinda puts the icing on the cake to our beach, it gives the shoreline showcase a place to call home. It gives Labor Fest and all those other activities, you know, a place to call home. And further, our plan is to make this as low of a maintenance facility as possible, learn from what happened at the Ramstel. We don't desire to have a staff, we don't desire to be a concert promoter, we desire to, as citizens, enhance our community. And so this will be scheduled very much like the Lions Pavilion, if you wanna have an event, you schedule it. If it's a wedding, there's a protocol, if it's a concert, there's a protocol, there'll be no fence around it. The only time there would be a fence is if you had a beer tent, you had to provide a perimeter, or you had a ticketed concert. So it, it very much is gonna be a lot like it is right now, it's just you're gonna walk around the corner and go, wow, there's a stage there, how cool is that? So part of our plan, and that, that's what you're gonna see when you drive by, just looks like another dune, it's like it's really not even there, it's kinda cool. So our desire, beginning June twentieth of next year, is to bring back the famous Manistee fish boil. And we've already partnered with the Lions, we're entering into a agreement with them, and they're gonna show us how to do the fish boil and make us a deal on all their equipment. We also have a sponsor that's come forward, and we're gonna be presenting a world-class drone show that night. So our plan is to have music and food trucks and the fish boil happening all day, the stage will be set up where this stage will be oriented, so people can see that the sound is not going towards the houses, it's going over the lake. And then at dusk, at dark, we'll have this beautiful drone show akin to a, a modern fireworks show, a couple hundred drones in the air that are all programmed, very unique to Manistee. And that will become an annual event, that June twentieth event, as a way to help sustain the venue, help maintain it, and help provide for the care and feeding of it. And then also, with regards to our fundraising, we don't know what the cost is. Another asset that we have through Mr. Corby is that Pioneer Construction out of Grand Rapids has offered to provide pro bono construction estimates for this. So we're off and running as far as the scope of what we would like to do, and we really need your blessing through this resolution, or this project frankly will just, you know, it'll, it'll just die on the vine. And it's really a shame, because we have a one million dollar donation committed, if we can bring a plan forward by the end of the year. And that is very powerful when it comes to raising funds. And with your resolution and that letter of intent from that donor, we will get this project done, with your blessing.
The situation kind of reminds me of the Hampton issue.
Yes.
And that, I believe, turned out well in the end. I do appreciate the effort, because I did have some comments that I replied to the, and they were all included, but you didn't include the view, I can see why. But you did really make a good effort to make that blend in, and I, I appreciate it. From my understanding, any construction that will happen will also come back for approval to council. So this is just the approval, so you guys can really start fundraising.
Correct, we, without this resolution, I can't approach foundations, grant sources, we have to have a formal agreement. Right now, we're just a citizen committee, and we, we need to be able to work on behalf of the city with regards to this proposal. We will be nothing but transparent, we have no agenda, other than to bring forth something that we can all be very proud of.
And this is a plan, this is set in stone?
Not at all.
But the.
The location is set in stone?
Well, yeah, because we, that's, we're working to the beach master plan, I mean, that went through a process. And so the beach master plan has identified that area for this asset, here we are.
I agree, the Hampton turned out much better, I think, than most expected. I'm impressed with the looks of this, that it's not this god-awful big concrete building that was gonna take away from beauty. All right, thank you for your time.
Hey, I've, I've got some questions too, I, I think out of any issues that have been on council, I've gotten more calls, memos, emails, texts. I've been here, so I think they feel comfortable calling, the people, the long-term residents are, they're very concerned. And one person came up with the city charter and said, the city council shall not lease, sell, or otherwise dispose of any Lake Michigan beachfront property or access thereto without an affirmative vote by the people of the electors of the city. And then it went on to say which one specifically, the C of that same on our city charter. The city council shall not sell, lease, or otherwise dispose of any Memorial Park property, North Duffy Park, Douglas Park property, or Red Shameric Park property, Manmade Lake property, without an affirmative vote. And the person that brought this to my attention said, in essence, that this is a lease, it is a change, it's a permanent change, because I don't think the city, you just said, will not be running it.
City will own it.
They'll own it, but they will not be running it.
Well, you will, and that, just like you run the Lions Park, or you run the boat launch, there are assets.
So it will involve the city then, so.
Well, the city will own it, we are not transferring any property, we are improving existing property, we're not leasing anything, we're building an asset and gifting it to the city.
Like the Ramstel, so I'm, I'm just hesitant too, because I got in the polls, people are a little bit concerned. The Ramstel is, is wonderful, and it's also an entertainment venue, but, and for many, many years, until recently, that was run completely by the Ramstel, which it still is, but it did not cost the city what it's costing the city now, it was, it was self-sustaining, then all of a sudden, things changed, whether it was the theater productions, whatever it is. And that has become, it's a great addition, we own it, but it is a, it's a big part of our budget at this point. So I, I would wish we would know a little bit more, and I know you're saying you're gonna maintain it, but we're the owner of it. So in the end, it is our, it's to maintain, it is ours to lease out, the calls will probably come in to the city clerk's office to lease and rent this out, and, you know, you'll probably line up the bands, but is, you know, I, I think that as far as the.
He said he's not lining up bands.
If, if we had an event, we would line the band up, but if the J.C.'s or any other.
Right.
They, they would, that would be their deal. We don't wanna be in that business, you know, we don't, we don't want to assume overhead, we don't want to assume risk. One of the things that I think we're gonna learn from the Ramstel, when they were doing their capital campaign, they should've raised beyond the physical asset and had an endowment to cover the shortfall. Had they done that, the hundred thousand dollar shortfall a year wouldn't be an issue, 'cause it would be covered. Our, our plan is to raise beyond the asset so that there's an endowment, I've already talked to Laura at the Community Foundation, there will be an endowment set up, so that every year, we can have the care and feeding of that taken care of. And as is mentioned in the resolution, because of my familiarity with the DDA, we envision a similar agreement. The DDA has an agreement with the city, they pay the city for extra services in the downtown area, we would do the same thing, we would pay for those extra services. We do not want this to be a burden on the city or our group, we want it to be an asset that can be enjoyed by the community as a whole.
And I agree with that, I just think there's some unanswered questions, like, it is a schematic, and I think that we want to, it's a permanent change, it is, the beaches, I, from the people that called me, that is their number-one thing in Manistee, and if there was any, like, the one, the height of it, we don't know, we saw that schematic, but I think Laney was referring to, when we saw the schematic of the Hampton, the trees were as tall as the building in those pictures. And it was like, oh, you'll never see it, because the trees are gonna be five stories tall when that building's built. And I'm saying the Hampton turned out very well, but I, I wish we could have a little bit more, the one dimension I saw was fifty by thirty.
That's the dimension of the stage, the front of the stage, Liz, will actually be, there'll be about an eight-foot drop. So by, by taking that drop and making that more of a natural bowl, that takes the, the height of that roof down, so that, that's the gist of that. If we look at the view, when you're driving around a loop, uh, right, I mean, that's what you'll see.
But I, I'd like to know the heights, I'd like to know more specifics, this is a, and I know you don't.
This was, this was put together literally in a few days for us.
So if we could just get a little more, we're giving up our greatest asset, not giving up, hopefully, this would be add, an addition to it. But to have a permanent change, I mean, there was someone today that told me, Liz, remember the industrial park, the council thought that was great? And I go, this isn't the industrial park, you know, but, you know, people here have a fear, because we commit to something that we don't know, the long-term ramifications. So I think, Mark, and I know you and trust you that, we just need more information before, I think you're asking us to make a forever decision, that we don't know the economic cost, any projections on that, you probably do, what is gonna involve S, and you're saying you'll do the maintenance, but you're gonna do it, you know, we just need a few more, little bit more information on that.
We, this is step one, these are all very important steps, but without this resolution tonight, this project is dead. And if that's what people want, then I'm sorry for that.
No.
Because a lot has been put into this, and I think over the years, a lot of effort has been made to make this project come forward. We have the people in place right now to make this project happen, but we can't do it without the resolution. So there, there will be tons of, of details that will come out of this, but without the permission and the agency of the city, we're, we're dead in the water.
I don't think we're saying no, I'm just thinking we need a little bit more, this is a huge, it's a huge, major change, and I, you know, of course, we all would want it to be perfect, and I, I think it could be, but I think we need a little bit more information, and the master plan, I was in on it, it's a guide, you know, it's a guide, and there are other things in there that, you know, so not everybody was uniformly, yes, it has to be at the beach or at that part, Laney, you were at those meetings, you know, there was talk, like you said, of different spots. So it wasn't like everybody said it's gotta be there, I just am hesitant myself to make this major commitment to take on another, you know, and I know you're saying not the maintenance, but the bathrooms even at the beach are hard to maintain, you know, it's like, it's one thing. And like, will this have bathrooms, or will the city be required to build bathrooms?
If you look on, to the left of the stage, that round roof, that's actually another building, that could be scaled to be a different, you know, it could be bigger or smaller. One of our requirements for the design was to have a concession vending area adjacent, and also a green room for the artists. So the performers that would come in would have an area to change before they went on stage and whatnot. So, and that could potentially be. So, and that could potentially be bathrooms. So the city bathroom, the Sir of the Lions could be there, or, you know, it, it could be either or. It will be at a minimum a green room and a concession vendor area, at a maximum, men's and women's bathroom and a couple of family bathrooms. But those could potentially only be open during events that are going on there, too.
Okay.
So they, they wouldn't require, you know, constant cleaning. They would need to be cleaned when they were used.
But the city would, at this point, have to provide some bathrooms or porta-johns or something because...
Generally, whoever puts the event on covers that cost. City generally doesn't cover that.
So the stage was thirty by fifty, but this other, I didn't realize there was two buildings here. The other circular building, the green room or whatever, how much is that one?
It, it's really just there as a placeholder. I mean, we truly wanted to have a rendering to bring to you folks tonight to see that this can be done with respect to the surrounding environment. It can be done tastefully, and it can be done tactfully and usefully. But we have to start somewhere, or we'll never get anywhere.
Now, the resolution, the MOU, MOA, and just, I absolutely, hundred percent, I like the idea. It's, you know, I was talking today, you know, that could be the crown jewel of the Riverwalk. You get the whole Riverwalk, and then it culminates here at the band show. So I understand that. Thank you for bringing up the beach master plan being a guide. You know, it's, I get a little bit annoyed when people go, "What's in the master plan?" Well, there's lots of stuff in the master plan. I was not a fan of this location. I have, I too have received many calls on it. I'm a little bit less not of a fan now, now that I see the building, you know, the band shell. The, my question is, after all that, say we do the resolution, and the next step, before ground is broken, that comes back before council, right?
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
And if it does not fit what people want, it stops, correct? Because the MOU is just, it's a, you know, I do federally all the time, it's a handshake. Hey, we're going to, we're going to play nice. And there's a dissolution of, of those MOUs as well, correct?
And I will say, we sent a draft to council, and I think we got some feedback. And I think the foundation's been very accommodating to those requests at low maintenance. So some things do remain to be seen. We talked about an asset management plan. This concept is great. I think the one thing probably council is missing is, and you're taking the first step here, but they're going to need to know what's the annual maintenance cost. And then based on that, is the fundraising going to be sufficient and what's going to be the city's commitment going forward? And they don't have that information, and, but this is step one, but...
So we're voting on the resolution to move forward with fundraising?
Fundraising and design.
Not baking, breaking ground?
But you're for sure on this location, Mark.
Yeah, so we would have to be, because I cannot fundraise without a vision to give people. I have to, I have to give a vision. I can't just say, "We're going to build an amphitheater somewhere someday." That's been going on for eight years, and we're where we're at.
Okay.
When you, if I ask, can I ask why you didn't choose like the Veterans Park or the other, the shoreline to like rehab that?
The Veterans Park. Oh, on the river?
Yes.
Okay, number one, it's a terrible, it's absolutely terrible for the artists. They have to lug all their equipment down the hill. It's terrible for anybody that needs access getting down to it. It's just a, the sound is terrible. The, it's, it was okay for when it was built, but as far as for what we're looking at doing, you know, that, that's a two or three-hundred-person venue, you know, that, and it's not at the beach.
Okay.
And as far as some of the other locations, you know, it, it just, again, I, all I did was give my input to the beach master plan, and that was kind of where we were working with Bill, you know, to say, "Okay, it's got to work through the process." So that's what we're doing. We're working through the process. So once the beach master plan was implemented, then in the, in the people I've talked to in the fundraising community, you have to have this resolution. That's the only way we're going to take...
How many, how many people does this venue hold?
Um, well, again, there won't be permanent seating. So approximately with the space there, it would accommodate about two thousand people. And for some of the bigger Labor Fest shows, they've had about eighteen hundred. So it wouldn't be any bigger crowd really than we've had for...
And is that concrete where people are sitting?
No, it's just all on, if you want to play catch or fly a kite or pitch your tent or do whatever you want to do, you can do it.
And then what, what do you do with it in the wintertime? Like, is there something like...
Man, it's, it's just cement. There's really, it's, there's really nothing to, you know, it's cement and steel. There's nothing to protect.
My concern is the, the cost, the maintenance costs, like, you're, you're going to fundraise for that maintenance cost, but you don't know what that is. And what if you fall short? Then what happens?
Well, we, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I know, but I'm just worried that, you know, you're like, hey...
But, okay, so if you had a traditional band shell structure, it would need painting. It would need a roof. It would need all of those things. The very nature of this is going to be very low maintenance. It's, it's buried. It's covered. There would be obviously a drainage system that would, that moved the water away. But the gist of it would be that beyond cutting grass and, you know, emptying trash and blowing and cleaning bathrooms, it would be, that would be it. Our desire is to not create a, you know, an anchor or burden on anyone.
Early in your conversation, one of the first things you said is that the people have chosen this spot. When and how were people asked that question?
I didn't mean to imply that if I did. What I meant is there was a process that this went through, and that was the beach master plan. And to, you know, Councilmember Smith, I get it, that's not set in stone. But the city goes through those processes for a reason. And if we were to build it somewhere else, I would be up here trying to convince you to do something that's not in the master plan. So that seems kind of counterproductive to me.
Well, Mark, I took in, and I was here for the Hampton, and a lot of people have called me, like everybody's got them. A lot of them though, if you want to put bathrooms in there, what did it cost us if we were going to put bathroom by the Lions?
Two hundred and fifty, yeah, twelve, more than that, yeah.
Do you intend to hook up to the city sewers with that? So what does it cost?
Yep, all of that will all be factored in. Power is huge. I mean, there's not adequate power down there. It's probably, it's going to be a big expense to get adequate power. But that's all going to be part of our, our bid package when we put the construction expenses.
How do we convince the people that are against this project now to...
I don't know that... Right.
Well, I think honestly, seeing what we're looking at is going to change a lot of minds.
Exactly.
I mean, I think we all visualized this big monstrosity that was, you know...
Well, when the five thousand people down there, twice it's been cut down.
Half, yeah, half as many, right. Well, and, and that was the reason that we, we really were pushing the architect to get us something for tonight. Again, because I understand people were thinking one thing. We're thinking something completely different. When we met with Mr. Corby, he said, "Do you want to take anything that we worked on before?" I said, "In all due respect, it's beautiful. I'd like to start with a clean slate." Ryan Biller, who is our board president, is director of bands at the high school. He also directs the community band. The stage was designed because, he said, "This is the big, as big a stage as we will need." We didn't make it any bigger than we had to. But to put the high school band, the community band, the Scottville Clown Band, you need a thirty by fifty stage. So that's, that was our rationale. And the orientation of the stage is to push the music away. There, it's literally going away from everything.
If you turn that around, that music will ride down the river.
No, they might hear us in Milwaukee one night if we're making enough noise, but I don't think they're going to hear us on Cherry Street.
Well, that was another issue that someone brought up that called, that our current disturbance ordinance, it's not really just a standalone noise ornament, ordinance. We don't have a decibel amount in there, but that is something that we should address, you know, as the council, if we're, if we're having a regular entertainment down there, just for...
Can I make a point?
Go ahead.
The question came up about the location. It's come up several times. And the, the last beach master plan, I think it was from two thousand and eight. It was been around for quite a while. And I was on the consultant team that worked with the community to develop that plan. And the children, the high school children specifically asked for a place that they could have entertainment at the beach. And so this location was chosen way back then. It's been seventeen years now that the community's been talking about it. When we went through this last process, it wasn't specifically put in the plan, but people were asked and the public participated. There were surveys done. So the beach master plans, you're all correct. Those are all possibility things that we can do. And the locations don't have to be specific, but they're all things that the community asked for. The walkways, the additional pavilions, you know, various assets. But we did focus specifically on, on, on a pavilion or a place to have music. And when the first rendering showed in taking out one of the softball fields and putting it there, that got a lot of negative reaction from the community because they didn't want to give up things that we already had. They also looked at by the Lions Pavilion, and can we use some of the assets that are already there? And we do have power there, and we do have water and sewer that are at close proximity. But there's some physical constraints, and there were interruptions of the view. I mean, there was a lot of work that was done, and a lot of us went out and looked and looked at the different angles and said, "That's, that doesn't work." So the beach master plan does have this location as, as the plan. And then I, I think it's up to, up to this committee and, and members of the, of the city to then work together to, to make it a project that's workable and doable. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did spend a lot of time discussing where that would, a potential band shell, amphitheater location would be. And one of the main reasons we ended up on that spot during the beach master plan discussions was because it was already blocked. There was no view. So it seemed like the least harm location. My reservation is the traffic, you know, when everybody goes and comes, it's a nightmare, just like for the fireworks. That's, I'm not, still not convinced that's the best location. But if, you know, everybody feels to make this happen, it has to be at the beach. You know, I, I'm glad we'll still have a chance to determine exactly the structure because I'm looking at safety issues here. People like...
There's a, there's a fence around the...
Oh, yeah.
So that would be very clearly delineated. There's a fence around the, that would be the only...
A fence where?
And would be around the roof of the structure, so you wouldn't invite people up on that structure. You would need to keep them off of that.
Yes.
Well, unless you wanted to have rappelling or something.
No.
Well, I've been asked about with this whole project is, why aren't we taking it to the vote of the people? Is there anything in the city charter, anything?
So I think Councilmember Lasky brought up that point about leasing. This is city property, but it is, I mean, you look at some of the other places we have, like the Lions Pavilion. I think the idea was this is going to be kind of passive for the most part. It's not going to be a commercial amphitheater that was kind of studied. This is more of a, I think, the foundation's a good job of making this like a park-like environment that could be, could have activities at it, much like the band shell and, or on the river, on the Manistee River. So I think it kind of is just an enhancement to public land as opposed to something that's given to an entity to manage. And that's kind of one thing that the foundation said, it's going to be an enhancement that the city's going to have, and that they're going to help us take care of it and also have, you know, a services agreement. So I think, kind of when we talk through this, I think the foundation wants to make sure it's the least burden on the city as possible. But also, I don't, I don't think it, and then we have to talk to the city attorney, but I don't think it reaches that threshold to need a vote of the people. I'd have to look at it.
I agree. Nothing in this resolution rises to the level of selling, leasing, or disposing such, such that you would need a vote of the electors.
I'm the one that was for that tree to stay where it's at.
Hundred percent.
Because I've been down there for years. The last three years because of the weather. But otherwise, when I go down there in the fall, when the butterflies are ready to fly south, that whole tree just shimmers with those things under the monitor.
Well, and if you get close to it, it's like, it's like twenty trees. It, it looks like one big tree, but it's, it's pretty neat.
Yeah.
It's beautiful.
But thank you.
Be good, guys?
Well, I'm still not one hundred percent comfortable.
We're just voting on for them to vote, so that's all that we're voting on, is the resolution to fundraise at, at the time. Do you have more questions?
No.
Guys, good? Heather, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Reska?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Keck?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky?
No.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration of a collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 645. At this time, council could take action to approve a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 645, and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Third, second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I've got one question for the chief. Just reading it over on the paramedic certification. And the new hires went on about having, and so the city will pay the cost of the employee obtaining paramedic licensure up to ten thousand dollars. And they will sign a repayment agreement. And then above, it said that it'll be a reimbursement. The city will reimburse a hundred percent of the tuition expenses paid by the employees, subtracting scholarships, tuition grants, or third-party payments, providing that the employee maintains a equivalent C or better. And so, didn't we just amend the budget a few months ago, or a few meetings ago, to pay forty-four thousand for two paramedics to attend school? I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, we did do a budget amendment so I could pay for the tuition of two paramedics, for their paramedic.
We amended it for forty-four thousand, not twenty thousand. That was what I'm questioning.
Okay, so we amended it for the amount of what West Shore charges for their paramedic program for two students to attend there. And that, so it was, that, that's what it costs for a paramedic school.
Forty-four thousand?
Yep. The amount that we amended it for was the amount for the tuition. I guess, I don't remember the exact amount.
But we're, I thought in here that in the agreement, it said, "We will give each one ten thousand towards their education." And it sounds like we gave them twenty-two each person.
So we did give them the, we, to pay for their paramedic tuition, yeah, we would have to pay for the full amount of the tuition of what it was. So that is, that is the difference. I believe probably the ten thousand, that was probably from some time ago when paramedic school was much less expensive.
It's in the current contract. I'm reading it on page thirty-three.
The repayment agreement, is that...
Everything is on page thirty-three of this contract that you sent us, Bill.
So what you're referring to is, is in the contract, and maybe that's something that should have been amended in the upcoming contract, because it doesn't match with tuition really.
Right. It said ten, we're going to pay ten thousand. It doesn't say that we'll pay, it doesn't even...
And maybe it's...
Up to ten thousand per person for the education is right, right in, it's on page thirty...
Well, is the ten thousand continuing ad?
No.
It's ten thousand paramedic certification on page thirty-three of, it was the red line.
Oh, you're almost there, Bill.
Okay, and that's...
You are on thirty-seven.
It was of the red line edition. I hope they're the same.
Oh, the red line edition?
Mm-hmm, the one Bill sent out that showed the comparison.
Well, it probably still would be in the original without the red line. Here.
That's education.
Well, there's page thirty-one. You said it's on what?
Well...
Well, and this is, yeah, there's a red line agreement.
Red line, oh.
Under the education part?
So education is different than the paramedic school?
That was two different things.
Two different things, yeah. Oh, there's the...
Up to ten thousand dollars to obtain their paramedic license.
So that was, the union was, the union agreement said ten, and so we overpaid, it sounds like to me.
Maybe a reason to go back to the union on this. Because, you know, it happens, because you've been doing a practice differently for so long, it's taken that that's how it's done?
Right. And I think, you know, when we had our TA in June and we had some, we had to wait for some drop language to come back. And between then and now, I think you get that information about the paramedic school. So, yeah, this is one that, we're kind of finishing up all the things we had to do language-wise with the other items. I don't think we had this, that information about the paramedic.
Yeah, at the time when this was discussed, we didn't have openings. We had those two unexpected openings that came, which created the opening, which the hiring process created two additional hiries that weren't... which created the opening, which the hiring process created two additional hirings that weren't paramedic. So, then we had to send them the paramedic tool. The, the cost of the paramedic school that we did ask for just represents of what paramedic does cost.
So, on that, does the, the way this stated in the union contract, that they would pay the cost. And then when they showed a passing grade of C or higher, then we would reimburse them. Is that how that's done now too, or are we not doing that?
So, with that, we would go on down from that. There's a repayment agreement that they sign. And with that repayment agreement, that says that we would pay for their tuition and they would have to pay us back if they didn't work a certain amount of time.
Well, that's a little different. I mean, that's the second thing. That, that they would pay for their whole degree if they quit in three years or less. But it also says that they will put the money up first and they have to show a completed grade. It was... A C or better. A C or better. And it's above this, Bill. It was above, that's not, it's above the repayment. It's that other page.
Is that the education one?
No, it was on the paramedic. 16.4, I think.
What did you say?
I believe it's 16.4.
16.4.
I think so. It was on that page 33.
There's, that's uniforms.
We're saying that they have to take the class, make sure that the attendant, I'm not saying that, the union agreement here in front of us said, just a little bit up, Bill. Employee, right here. The employee must maintain a grade C or better in the courses. In the event that the employee does not maintain a grade C or better, or fails to successfully pursue the degree in accordance with the schedule provided, they will not be eligible for city reimbursement. But now, we're changing it, saying we're paying it upfront. We... Is that what you're saying?
So, that educational reimbursement, that would be if they were to sign up for college classes to go and earn their, like a bachelor's degree or bachelor's degree. So, that'd be something separate from what...
That's different. Okay, so this one, they, so the paramedic, it's...
Yeah, the paramedic certification would be something different. That education reimbursement agreement goes for like college classes if they were going to go to...
That makes sense.
Community college for a degree.
So, we need to amend this to, to be not up to $10,000, but up to $20,000. Is that correct?
It sounded like 22 or 23.
Is that what that cost is, is $20,000 for paramedic?
Yeah. So, when we, the cost of paramedic school as the need, the demand for paramedics has increased, the, the cost of paramedic school shot up there quite quickly too, so.
I would say, yeah, it needs to be amended, but just say the current cost to obtain a paramedic licensure because you'd be working on this every year.
That's true.
Don't put a hard number in there. I guess my concern with the contract was the residency, the huge residency requirement change for several reasons. I guess I don't think it's a bad thing that somebody who is an employee lives in the community and the community that pays their salary. I'm afraid it sets a precedent for other groups wanting the same consideration. I also think that if some, an employee isn't willing to commit to our area, our community, that they will leave at the first opportunity. And, you know, we're making an investment by providing, in most cases, an education, which, you know, even if this is agreed to, it almost seems like there should be some kind of penalty if you're going to live outside of the community. For example, we will only pay the educational, the educational costs for a resident, not somebody who chooses to be a non-resident.
But what if they can't be a non-resident? Like, what if they have a spouse that has a job and they can't relocate? Or if they relocate...
That happens all the time. People make the move, though.
Yeah, but what if they relocate and now they can't afford a house here because they're only a one-salary income? Like, if they're willing to work, I mean, why wouldn't we take...
20 miles is all we're...
That's what we did have. That's what we did have. Now, it's 90, 95.
Now, it's 90. It's a 75-mile increase, which means, you know, realistically, probably a two-hour trip. And my problem is it's in a real emergency situation when we need everybody in a fire, a real emergency. Two-hour trip is a lot to request people to wait. I mean, it's a huge detriment and I understand it's hard to get employees. But, you know, once you set this in place, there's no going back. Yeah, it might take a couple more months to get an employee. But because of all the reasons I just said, I don't think it's a good fit to get, settle on an employee for all the reasons I just said. That's, that's all I can say.
They tell you the first five minutes are the most important.
Yeah, so I...
Yeah. So, so when we did look at reason, you know, certainly I understand, and we talked about residency before. You know, my personal experience with residency, I've been dealing with it since I was seven years old. All right, so where we had to do it. So, you know, and I agree, you know, we do want our employees to be invested in our community and come and bring them to here. I think part of that is attracting them to our fire department, providing, you know, good services, good place to work and all that type of stuff, which we're certainly working on. But when we looked at the other contracts and when we did comparables, you know, all these fire departments are having trouble recruiting and retaining firefighters. There is a national shortage and a shortage also here in Michigan. So, what we did is we did comparables with other fire departments that are of similar size, similar makeup of the same one that we operate here in Manistee. And I studied their contracts and that's what that list up there represents. And as you see, a lot of the fire departments that are in the same situation, we have completely eliminated residency. You know, three of them have no residency at all. Another one just put for the state of Michigan, you know, so you couldn't live on the other side of the lake because they have the same obstacles that we have right here. Nine-five miles, you're right. That, that's a large number and it does seem large, you know, but we, you know, we know how to remember that half of that, you know, is the lake. So, we are doing that. And what we're trying to do is reach some sort of the metropolitan areas because with these job openings that we have now, they do typically come with younger people or younger spouses and two-income families and that, where both our employee and the spouse need to, you know, look for work and get places in there. You know, my personal experience, I was able to come here and apply for this job and to move a family because my wife works from home. She's a, she, she works remotely and that. And I was lucky. But not everybody has that type of thing. And that was one of the things is so when we looked at the other compartments and how we can get retained people, we kind of split it right down the middle. Have the 70 miles, 50 miles, that. Some have none. So, that 95-mile mark, that was kind of in the middle of everything that we saw, right there. We understood that the council did still want to have some sort of residency and there were strong wheels. So, we wanted to keep that in there. But what we're seeing there is it is, it's very hard to retain and keep employees. In the two years that I've been doing this, we've had two openings and that, we've hired four or five different people to retain those. And it's just, you know, we're offering something that's not a monetary thing that would help retain our employees and really show them the program that we're running and attract them into our community that way.
What's the power that now your, one of your employees goes?
What's that?
What's the power that one of your employees goes now?
We currently now have a 20-mile residency. So, all of our current firefighters work here. They have to comply with that 20-mile residency.
So, why did we make such a big jump? Why didn't we do something like within Manistee County?
Yeah. It was really looking, when you look at the map and you look at the different areas, you know, the 20 miles, you got the county. But there's really no other cities or metropolitan-type areas that would attract a diverse amount of employees within, you know, 20, 30, 40. It really takes these large numbers for us to order, like, like a Muskegon area or Traverse City area or something like that, which a lot of, uh, potential employees, you know, gravitate towards maybe a little bit larger cities that might have the more opportunity for their spouses to find employment. So...
Do we need to amend the...
I think a motion approved with amending the paramedic to the current cost, I think, would be helpful.
All right. Thanks.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Liz, it was your catch.
I make a motion to approve the, what was the motion here? The fire...
We, we have a motion to approve already on, so it would just be a motion to amend.
Let's have a motion to amend the collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 645 to change the paramedic certification to cover that the, up to, up to the current, current amount, I guess, or however, what's the best way of saying? Up to the current cost of the edu, of the certification. Yeah, current tuition cost of the paramedic certification.
Got all that, Heather?
Yes.
Everything's the same except for the...
We're going to cover the, the paramedic certification tuition costs.
Current tuition cost.
Current tuition cost.
Is there a second?
I guess I have a question. Oh, no, you got to do the second. Sorry.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Can, because this is a union negotiation, are we allowed to do that without going to the union and getting their okay on it?
I think we'll have to go back to them, but I think with it being a change like this, I think it should be...
To their benefit. I'm sure they'll be fine.
Their benefit, not a... They will love that. Okay. I just want to make sure it was okay.
Yeah. Ready to take role?
Yes. So, the first one will be on the amended motion. Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky. Mayor Sullivan. Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Resga.
Yes.
Motion approved. And the next will be on the original motion as amended. Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Resga.
No.
No?
No. I, am I saying it wrong again? Were you amended?
So, the first one, you voted yes on the amendment and the next, you're voting on the original motion as amended.
So, I don't like the contract, so I'm voting no.
Okay.
Thank you. Consideration of applications and boards of commissions, the city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the compensation commission, neighborhood restoration and beautification commission, parks commission, planning commission, and zoning board of appeals. Mayor and manager appointments require motion second. Council voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second after all nominations are made. Council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives the majority support. The following applications have been received. Parks commission, one vacancy term ending 6/30/2026. Purpose advisory of parks development, maintenance, improvements, and identifying, planning, implementing, public and private beautification projects. Mayoral appointment, we have Scott Warson, 816 Robinson Street. The planning commission, three vacancies, terms ending 10/31/28. The purpose review of master plans, zoning site, plans, development issues, mayoral appointment. Mark Whitliff, 363 10th Street. Marlene McBride, 217 River Street. At this time, the mayor and council could take action to appoint as noted above. I would like to appoint Scott Warson to the Parks Commission, 816 Robinson Street, the term ending 6/30/2026. Is there a motion of support?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Resga.
Warson.
Warson. You can say yes. You can say yes or no on this one. I'm messing you guys up. I'm going backwards. Councilmember Grabowski.
Warson.
And again, you can say yes or no on this because it's not a nomination. Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky. Mayor Protem Smith.
Now, you get to me. Yes.
I, I wanted to see if you were paying attention. Motion approved.
Thank you. The planning commission, I would like to appoint Mark Whitliff, 360 10th Street, to the planning commission term ending 10/31/28. Is there a motion of support?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Heather, would you please take role?
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Resga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Also, to the planning commission, I would like to appoint Marlene McBride, 217 River Street, to the planning commission term ending 10/31/28. Is there a motion of support?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Heather, would you please take role?
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski. Councilmember Resga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now, we will have a report from the Parks Commission, Ms. Karen Mao.
Hello. I'm Karen Mao of the Parks Commission, chair of the Parks Commission. And I just wanted to say that this is a great year to be a part of the Parks Commission with the Beach Master Plan. And I'm going to add lip here a little from my notes. Sorry. So, forgive me. But I wanted to say that our vision statement that we crafted as a Parks Commission a few years ago contained the phrase "to protect and preserve the parks for future generations." And that's kind of the lens that we viewed the whole Beach Master Plan through, including, oh, my gosh. Are my slides, there they are. Okay. I didn't want to get ahead. But as you can see in the first slide, those tall iconic slides with the great nostalgic charm. Intergenerationality, adults love them as much as the kids. That was one of the first things that everybody was in agreement that we needed to get that into the Beach Master Plan, just as those are kept assets. No risk of those going away. We're preserving those for the future generations. And it's the down arrow, right?
Yes.
Sorry, yeah.
Oh, no, sorry. There we go. A little crazy with that. And also, we looked through the lens of preserving all the natural, natural assets and iconic views. And bringing up the amphitheater tonight, I didn't know that was going to be on the agenda. But that's specifically the reason through the Beach Master Plan, we recommended that it not go in the area around the Lions Pavilion because we all know we're going to be those people someday where we're too old to get out of our cars and we can only drive around the beach loop and we can only park there and eat our DQ. And we want to see the lighthouse and the coast going up to the north. And so, that's a really important thing that we're all going to participate in someday. But we want that to be there for our generation as well as the, the ones down the road. That's why those pictures are on the top. On the bottom, I love that the amphitheater, Mark Sandstad spoke about it blending into the landscape because that was my next point, actually. The disc golf course, that's actually a view from hole 18 and I think it's hole 10 on the right with the bridge where they actually, instead of, say, raising a hill, they created a reason to go up the hill, you know, make the hill the asset. And I think that's a really cool thing that they just did with the, kind of a depressed amphitheater. And I, my eyes are bad, so I don't know if I saw grass over the top, but if it is, I think that's a really, that's a really unique way to try to integrate into the landscape, which is what I was going for right here. So, the Parks Commission is a seven, seven-member commission, though we kind of worked with six active members over the last 10, 10 of the last 12 months. We've had three resignations between February and August, a six-month period. And with, those are our new people in page. The asterisks are the people that are in danger of resignations within the next month or two because of the city council policy CP10. So, we're excited for the new people coming on, the new energy and eyes and perspectives that they bring. And we also know there's, there's benefit to continuity too. I don't know when that balance swings over, when, you know, one's going to be harming the other. But I do know that's going to, it's going to be kind of a reset period that we're already in where we're reassessing what projects we can continue with at the same pace. Specifically, movies in the park. We were all set to go ahead and request funding. We have all our ducks in a row. We learned a lot from Luddington's Movies in the Park. They were really great in helping us figure out how to get things going. But we don't know at this point if we have the manpower within the Parks Commission to continue with that event. So, we're kind of a feeling-out process. So, just, just know that that, that does affect the Parks Commission a bit. I have a new slide. Sorry. So, the way we organize our activities, this is the exact same slide from last year, so I'm not going to go too much into it. It's a different picture. We're all a little older. But we do advise to city council is our primary role. All of that flows through Jeff McCula, our lovely partner in the Parks Department, DPW. They support basically everything that we do and they're a great partner and we really appreciate them. He, Jeff McCula, runs our annual bus tour and we invited more than just the Parks Commission this year. We invited again, city council, members of the community foundation, the Chamber, the economic development volunteers. There was, there was a big crew this time. And I'm just going to go through those other things as we approach them in the following slides. They're going to go really quickly now. That was my longest per slide. Eyes on the Park is just a program that the dear councilwoman Lasky created when she was chair. We're dividing the parks up in sections of parks between us, six or seven commissioners, and we're reporting on those every month, whether it's maintenance issues or feedback from the community, vision for the parks. And this is just something that we caught, that leadership group was putting up these great sensory boards, but the location was going to be blocking the view of Lake Michigan there at Rotary Park. So, we respectfully requested if that could be changed location before it was completed, and they did do that. It's now over by the trees on the left and we see the actual lake instead of the very beautiful painting of the lake. So... We had two hands-on projects this year. One was at Morton Park, kind of a continuation of what we did in revamping that park a year and a half ago-ish. And we worked with the Tree Commission. They donated the grasses, the DPW's... worked with the tree commission, they donated the grasses, the DPW slash parks department dug more than 21 holes, I know we had to fill some in, we didn't have enough plants, but, and along that fence line there in the top picture, it's just a chain-link fence, it's a little rusty, and it was kind of a harsh line there between the park space and the industrial space, so we, excuse me, we wanted to soften that, and the bottom picture shows them kind of halfway through the summer, there's a growth there of decorative grasses, I don't know their actual name, but the inspiration was the art parked down on River Street, which is not a city park, it's, it's publicly open, though, and they just really successfully camouflaged that alleyway behind in the parked cars, and on the right, you'll see, this was about Labor Day, I think, the grasses had grown up to help to kind of soften the view between the park over there by the basketball courts on the southern end and, and Morton Salt. And the other one is the Lions Pavilion plantings, Karen Peltoya on our commission plants those every year in the early summer, she changes them out before label with Christmas greenery and festive, and then DPW is very good to help us fill those self-watering planters, I don't, I don't know how often, but they're not perpetual self-watering, so they're, they're helping us out with those. And then, oops, we held six events in the parks, most of them in the summer. We're, we're reassessing, as I said, how much energy we have to devote to those, they do take a lot of effort, but I think they're received really well. This was Mark Fetter down at the city marina giving a talk on the history of the city marina and really the whole west end of River Street in February, so when we couldn't be out in the parks as much, we were learning about the parks, educating ourselves and the community. And then we held two-story time in the parks with the county library, Angie Holtman now. It was a tea party in Reeds Park, and then followed up with a pirate party at the city marina. They are walking the plank there. I would've tried it if I would've broke. And then we did, if you're familiar with our park art drop events, it's a scavenger hunt through all the city parks as people try to find with these little base clues, an art token they trade in for a local artist's work of art at city hall, and we did hold two of those, one just after Labor Day, one just after the Forest Festival, and this woman just found the art token under the paw of the lion at the beach, and this was in a hollow in a tree along the shore of Manmade, so we're really kind of routing them through all the different parks at the end, and also to try to find those, so, and that, that was just one of the art pieces that was one. And finally, oops, there it is, police in the park. This was probably our best-attended event at Morton Park back in June, there was grilling of hot dogs, watermelon, it was intergenerational, there were as many grandparents as kids, I think, and it was really fun, and I've gotta say, my choice of pictures, my husband looked at that and said, "What are you doing? There are kids being chased by the police, and with their hands up, don't shoot." Total coincidence, but I thought it was so funny in hindsight, I just decided to leave it, but it is duck, duck, goose, and Simon says, just, so, you know. And then finally, back to the end, just so you get an idea of the just magnitude of, of the activities and intensity that these parks commission members approach their volunteer position with, up at the top, these are all meetings where either we're members of those groups, or we're sitting in, in the gallery here, just to sit in and educate ourselves, so we know what's going on in other groups in the community. Collaborations, again, with Morton Park, it was the tree commission, I should've worn my glasses, and Ninth Street Boat, Boat Launch Committee, we just, just formed a group to work with the harbor commission to try to figure out what the future of Ninth Street Boat Launch looks like, so that, that's brand new, and then our in-the-parks event series, those are just all the people within the community that we're collaborating with to make those events happen, so, I try to be short. Do you have any questions?
You did great.
I think so. No? Okay, thank you.
Great job, Karen, you're doing a great job as chairman.
Citizens comment, this is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or other areas of city involvement limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read.
Did your guy leave?
Good evening, Mark Whitliff, 363 10th, I just wanna thank you for the reappointments of Marlene McBride and myself to the planning commission tonight. We have great continuity with this, and keep the momentum going for Manistee. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Douglas Dominic, I live at 920 Ingleman Street. I'm here tonight to raise a concern regarding the procedural compliance surrounding the appointment of the city's part-time code enforcement officer. Under chapter 650 subsection C of the city ordinance, a quote enforcement officer, end quote, is defined as a Manistee city building inspector, any Manistee city police officer, or any other person designated by the Manistee City Council to enforce the provisions of this ordinance. This language is clear, designation by city council is not optional. It is a required legal step for any civilian to any civilian enforcement role. Yet, based on the city's response to FOIA request 25-58, which I submitted, no resolution or formal designation of the current part-time code enforcement officer, Mr. Tim Ball, was provided. The only documentation offered was a budget line item and a brief introduction at a council meeting, neither of which constitute formal designation under ordinance. This raises serious concerns about the validity of, of any citations, warnings, or enforcement actions issued by Mr. Ball. If he was not properly designated by resolution, then any enforcement he has carried out may be procedurally unauthorized and subject to legal challenge. Residents who have received citations under chapter 650 may have been denied due process, and the city may be exposed to liability for enforcement conducted without proper authority. I respectfully urge the council to, one, clarify whether a formal resolution designated Mr. Ball as an enforcement officer was ever passed. Two, if not, immediately suspend enforcement actions under chapter 650 by any non-designated personnel. Three, consider retroactive designation only after a full review of past enforcement and its potential impact on affected residents, including whether any citations, fines, or corrective actions were issued without lawful authority and should be formally rescinded. Four, ensure that future appointments comply fully with the ordinance language to preserve public trust and legal integrity. Five, acknowledge that any enforcement actions taken by an improperly designated officer may be considered null and void, and that affected residents should be notified of their right to contest or appeal such actions. This is not a matter of budget, it's a matter of law. I appreciate your attention to this issue and your commitment to transparent, accountable governance. Second issue, I'd like to respectfully request that my full public comment tonight be included in the official meeting minutes, not simply my name as having spoken, which is how the minutes all appear for anybody that comes up to this podium, just that they spoke. No one has any idea of what they said, what the content was, and what actions the city needs to take. The substance of my remark, my remarks addresses ordinance compliance, procedural integrity, and potential legal implications for the city. These are matters of public interest and administrative accountability. Including the full text ensures transparency, preserves the public record, and allows future, future reference to the concerns raised, especially when no verbal response is provided during the meeting. I believe this aligns with the spirit of open government and the public's right to a complete and accurate record of civic engagement. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Campbell?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Ms. Resga?
Just a couple things. On October 14th, at 9:00 AM, the forefront credit union will be forming a See You Kind Day at the Ramstil Theater, cleaning it up. Everyone's welcome to participate, and the good news is there's seven weddings scheduled throughout this fall, September 23rd through December 8th there, and I also passed out the council, and, you know, anybody who wants to participate, there's a county recreation plan survey out there. It's a time to tell you what you think about the county recreation plan, so you should take advantage of that opportunity to tell people what you want. That's it.
Mr. Grabowski?
Bill, I've been thinking about this for a while. We have a facility manager that we, that's supposed to work at the city hall. Do we still have that cleaning crew that they hired?
No, we, we did that while, um, yeah, the facility manager was off, so no, we do not.
When, when, didn't we just hire an employee or something for some department?
So, we did fill the part-time assistant at the community development department, so that just started, I think, last-
When, when we get a new employee hiring, can we know what they're earning? I don't think we've ever heard of any.
It's part of the budget, but I, yeah, I don't kind of, we don't send that out specifically, but it's something that can be provided to council.
Well, it'd be nice to know what we're paying out. Also, I know the slay bill parade will be coming up again, can we get a what the budget was last year on that thing? Well, people have asked me, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, I appreciate it. Okay.
I'll say. Ms. Keck?
I'm good, thank you. Thanks so, for so many showing up tonight for the meeting, appreciate that.
Ms. Lasky?
Nope, I'm good, too.
Mr. Smith?
I am all set, thank you.
Okay. Consideration of a closed session manager annual evaluation, city manager William Campbell has requested a closed session this evening as permitted by the Open Meetings Act, section 8A, for discussion on the city manager's annual evaluation. At this time, council will take action to proceed to close session or section 8A of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll support.
Heather, would you please take role?
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Keck?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Resga?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Always looking for something.
Hey, get all the money.
We have a motion.
What?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Always looking for something.
Hey, you gotta make money.
We have a motion.
What?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Please.